Councilman Steve McGoy is out tonight. Brings us to the pledge of allegiance, which is going to be offered by Councilman Mike Candazola, followed by the opening prayer, which will be Councilman Gene Steele. Would you stand with me and remain standing for both, please?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
.....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I just want to say thanks again, this group back here that does all the planning are probably by far one of the most fun groups you can possibly work with. It's just, it's, these events that they sponsor and stuff too are just a hoot, they're really fun, so if you haven't been to one, I recommend you come to one. And this year was really challenging for this check. I mean, I can't tell you how many times, I think we got rained out twice. Covid happened right at the golf tournament, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to throw it on, so everybody persevering in it was really good. And I'll just also say thank you for, a lot of the agencies that receive money through this aren't here today because, you know, they don't always get a chance to say thank you, but I do know that because they tell me to always pass that on to the employees and the council for the generous donations we get. And this is our second longest campaign we've been running. We have Freeport and you two are senior veterans here, so we're hoping to pass the torch on to other agencies as well to show them how it's done like you all have been doing, so I just want to thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And brings us to item 7-2, Graham County Chamber of Commerce. Vance. Are you giving us money too?
No.
I said, are you giving us money too?
Sales tax.
It is. Get it up on the wall, huh? I guess not. Vance, before you start, you, Councilman Hemphill is the new liaison, and so I think lunch date is needed.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you projecting? All right, good. The other way I need to work on it. Can I go to?
Yeah.
Don't, no.
No.
With the food out there?
There it is. My name is Vance Bryce, this is Brittany Hernandez. We are the staff members at the Graham County Chamber of Commerce located at 1051 West Thatcher Boulevard in Stafford. Thank you Mayor Kouts and to the entire city council for giving me time on the agenda to provide the annual report for the chamber, and a special thank you to CMI for donating our posters for this presentation. Our team is finishing our second year of the chamber, and I can't believe how lucky we are to do this work in this community that we love so much. I have some ambitious and exciting updates to give you, including spreading our funding requests equitably across the entire valley. But first, I want to give you some historical context. The chamber is quickly approaching our centennial in 2026. Over 100 years ago, the business owners and residents of the Gila Valley were coming out of the Spanish Flu pandemic, which killed many, many people worldwide, including some of our own Gila Valley residents. We are coming out of our own devastating pandemic, just like the leaders that sat in your chairs 100 years ago. We need to build our institutions and support the relationships that will get us through the next 100 years. The business leaders of 1921 left us a blueprint for their optimism and success. The Gila Valley Farmer Newspaper reported that the valley's economic success was accomplished by persistency of purpose coupled with attention to details, plus keen business foresight and the energy to do things. Today, I'd like to highlight a few of the programs the chamber is doing in the current fiscal year and explore some programs we intend to implement with your investment in the upcoming fiscal year. As you know, our local businesses provide value with their products and services, provide the dignity of hard work to themselves and their employees, educate and inspire our community while being creative and contributing jobs, sales tax revenue, and support to the community. We are lucky to live in a community that loves to buy local. Normally, the chamber is engaged with businesses, creating tourism marketing plans, organizing Gila Valley leadership outings, and planning festivals, but this year has given us the chance to learn new skills and start new programs. When the pandemic hit, we supported Danny Smith's efforts to create a Gila Valley Takeout Stimulus Plan Facebook group where restaurants could share hours and how to order from restaurants during the shutdown. This plan became a more formalized effort when our vice president, Reed Richens, and Stafford, Thatcher, Pima, and Graham County created a marketing plan where people could find out just how to support local restaurants. And I think that was a, that was a call from Reed and the mayor and just figuring it out in a few days. It was really inspiring. There was a lot of confusion early on for customers as to who was open, if they could call ahead, and how to get their food. The chamber collected funds and negotiated 50% off the marketing for two directories, one with Gila Valley Central and another with the Gila Herald. Kevin Peck from the Eastern Arizona College Small Business Development Center created the Arizona COVID-19 Business Team, which was a group of elected officials and business leaders that met weekly to discuss how shutdown and mask rules would be enforced. This group has helped our whole area collaborate better than ever before. The chamber was interested in getting money into the hands of business owners fast, so that they could pay their utility bills, mortgage payments, and most importantly, cover payroll, so that their employees could keep up with their monthly bills. Members of the business team, Danny Smith and the City of Stafford piloted the gift certificate program that turned into the Gila Valley Gift Certificate Program, where the United Way and local governments covered deep discounts so that businesses could sell lots of gift certificates fast. Special thank you to Matthew Huschel for administering that program, he's here tonight. The chamber marketed this program in all of our local media outlets, including Live Radio and Facebook Live. We also created a webpage that showed which businesses had gift certificates and which had sold out. We received a $15,000 grant to start a farmer's market to help local food producers start small businesses and sell their food. Customers are looking for local supply, food supply chains, and we are excited to continue to develop this market. Here are some water bottles from the campaign with special links from the United Way of Graham and Greenlee Counties and Local First Arizona. We also have some salsa trail t-shirts that say, "I ate my way through COVID-19," which is part of the, the local food program. These are brought to you by LifeNet, Harrell's Tire Company, Valley Telecom Group, Tierra Antigua Realty, Cat Country, La Paloma, Trek RV and Outdoor, Into the Wild Outdoors, Genevieve's Marketplace, Maverick Motorsports, Cakes with TLC, CMI, the Gila Herald, Gila Watershed Partnership, Eastern Arizona Courier, Eat Local Gila Valley, Trophies in Tees, and Brando's Fun and Sun Travel and Cruise. I name them all to show that we are really getting out there with these businesses and having everyone circle the wagons right now. The chamber marketed several federal and state programs as well. In collaboration with the Eastern Arizona College Small Business Development Center, Small Business Administration, and Arizona Commerce Authority, we helped businesses apply for payment protection program funds and economic injury disaster loans. I want to give a shout out to our board member Tabitha Aranda and her team at National Bank of Arizona for working the long hours needed to secure these loans for business owners. We have two more programs to roll out before the end of this fiscal year, including offering $1,000 grants to businesses so that they can develop websites, try out online marketing, and offer e-commerce stores to their customers. We are also partnering to develop a program called Tailgates. The idea is that good ideas become profitable businesses over lots of conversations over tailgates. This program will help people with good ideas start businesses, and this program gets started in April. One of our top priorities in the coming fiscal year is to be a major leader in gathering organizations together with the energy to get things done. There are several non-governmental organizations in the Gila Valley working toward economic success in the Gila Valley. The chamber is actively building relationships with all of these organizations to organize our strategic plans in a way that we can help each other achieve our objectives. What started as lunches with Danny Smith, Kevin Peck, and others has turned into a more formal effort to work together on our strategic plans to improve the quality of life for everyone in the Gila Valley. Our nonprofit boards are in need of training and recruitment efforts. We are working with the United Way to help train nonprofit boards through our leadership program and through our new Eastern Arizona Nonprofit Management Association. I serve on the steering committee of the Gila Valley Food Coalition, where we connect food producers with customers and work with our partners toward the goal of filling every mouth and belly in the Gila Valley with good, good food. As part of our efforts to serve the towns of Thatcher and Pima and to earn their investment, the chamber is proposing merchants associations in both communities to serve in a similar capacity as the Stafford Downtown Association does here in Stafford. If approved, we will work with them on buy local programs and local events. This list of organizations is not exhaustive, there's a lot of work to be done to make these organizations more effective. I am personally grateful for the support of the City of Stafford and for our wonderful relationship. As I continue to work with Thatcher and Pima, the chamber is proposing a full press support for economic, for the economic community, including our Greenlee and Cochise partners in the effort. The chamber is hungry to work with anyone with good ideas and a plan to move forward. The chamber's current funding plan is unsustainable because it relies on the City of Stafford to foot most of the bill for the entire county. The community expects my organization to help existing businesses thrive, train our future leaders, develop our food producers, and lead our community-wide tourism plans. We are not adequately funded to do this countywide job well. With much of our funding depending on bed tax, our community is set up to defund the chamber during economic disasters like the recent pandemic, or future bubble bursts or recessions. We are the first responders for businesses during economic disasters. We need to bolster our funding plan so that the chamber is around to help. This fiscal year, we have been funded $40,000 less than last fiscal year because our funding plan depends on bed tax to fund our operations. Bed tax is designed to pay for tourism marketing. We are currently using nearly every penny on operating costs. While some of these funds can pay for our visitor center operating hours, much more of it should be dedicated to our community tourism and branding programs. This new funding plan begins the process of the chamber not depending on bed tax for our operating costs and using it for its intended purpose of tourism marketing instead. Currently, we receive 64% of our funding from the City of Stafford, 28% from our annual memberships, 4% from the town of Thatcher, 4% from Graham County, and .1% from the town of Pima. For the next fiscal year, I would like to propose a more equitable funding plan where we receive 38% of our funding from the City of Stafford, 27% from our annual memberships, 20% from the town of Thatcher, 5% from Graham County, and 10% from the town of Pima. I came up with these percentages based on the population of the city and towns. Graham County is structured differently when it comes to sales tax. We are asking them to become copper members at the chamber, which is $12,000 a year. Under this funding plan, the City of Stafford would continue its investment of $20,000 a year plus 50% of the bed tax. The difference is that with more equitable, equitable funding from the towns, I won't need to scrounge around to fund staff payroll during economic disasters, which hit bed tax revenues first. This more reliable funding program will keep us focused on keeping businesses open rather than staying afloat ourselves. Our program of work includes the chamber maintaining, oh, let me move this up. Our program of work includes the chamber maintaining a current business directory, working closely with local merchants associations to plan events and create buy local marketing campaigns, which, Kip Kempton's in the audience, and he is our, one of our buy local sponsors, so thank you so much, Kip. And create buy locally marketing campaigns and to serve as liaisons to the Arizona Commerce Authority. With the Gila Valley Leadership Program, we, we create curriculum and administer discussions and case studies every month, maintain a current directory of leaders, lead nonprofit board trainings, and are obtaining a 501(c)(3) status so that they can adequately create fundraising campaigns. The Arizona Office of Tourism recognizes official, official destination marketing organizations. Organizing the Gila Valley Welcome Center as an official destination management organization allows us to recruit a dedicated tourism council, maintain a visible and attractive visitor center open Monday through Saturday, develop a marketing plan for the Gila Valley, manage bed tax funds more appropriately, lead and expand the world famous salsa trail, and formalize our relationship with the Arizona Office of Tourism. Our first tourists are our residents. We need to market the Gila Valley to our own people. When our people love this community, tourism will follow. With the tourism mark, with, excuse me, with the farmer's market, we are assisting food producers to create businesses by helping with permitting and food safety, managing the marketing and point of sale while serving on the steering committee for the Gila Valley Food Coalition. In our funding requests, we are asking the towns, Pima and Thatcher, for more investment so that we can grow these programs. New chamber members will fund our chamber programs. By reorganizing Gila Valley leadership and farmer, and the farmer's market as 501(c)(3) organizations, we can fundraise more effectively and bring back scholarship pageants and provide internships for Eastern Arizona College students. By reorganizing the tourism portion of our work as an official destination management organization, we are able to create a Gila Valley marketing plan where we can then partner with the Arizona Office of Tourism to cover half of our costs. We are adding events to our schedule to serve the whole county. The current events we have planned in Stafford for next fiscal year are a New Year's Day Hot Air Balloon Festival, Nonprofit Management Conference, Gila Valley Bridle and Event Fair, Stafford Wine, Art, and History Festival, National Independence Business Week, Salsa Fest, and Small Business Saturday the day after Black Friday. Graham County Chamber directors in the past 10 years haven't lasted long, and I know why. They did not have the funding, support, and relationships to do the job that this community expects them to do well. I am committed to this position only if I have the resources to do my job well. Without increased investment from the town of Pima and the town of Thatcher, anything with a star next to it in this presentation is a plan that will need to be canceled. Without increased investment from our towns, I will need to let go of some current staff. Without increased investment from the towns of Pima and Thatcher, the chamber will have to limit our scope to serving the City of Stafford, whose leadership stood to save the chamber a few years ago and has generously funded it ever since. The status quo is not an option. Either we are funded, supported, and networked into all of the Gila Valley, or the chamber needs to focus on the City of Stafford. My grandpa always said that his definition of hell is being given a responsibility to accomplish a task without the power or authority to complete it. I know you have ideas for events in the Gila Valley, more effectively organizing our resources, and reestablishing and bolstering our institutions and traditions. If I can convince the rest of the county to fully fund the chamber, our community will have four highly dedicated and competent staff to organize our efforts, plan our events, and build our institutions to last another 100 years. Remember that the valley's economic success is based on the energy to do things. We have that energy. Thank you for your generous support of this wonderful institution.
Okay.
It's take any questions.
You said asterisk, things with asterisk meant, it meant what?
That, that would mean if we don't get this funding from the town of Pima and the town of Thatcher, we're going to cancel any development of those because we just don't have the funds to do it without, without their, without increasing their investment.
And that, that's, the asterisk to me began on slide five. Does that same meaning apply to that page?
So you've got that Eastern Arizona Nonprofit Management Association, Gila Valley Food Coalition, Pima Merchants Association, and Thatcher Merchants Association. Those are something we would, we would refocus. Let's say worst-case scenario, Thatcher and Pima say, "No, no way. We're not giving you any, anything more than that, than we already give you." Then we won't do a Pima Merchants Association, we will not do a Thatcher Merchants Association. We'll limit what we do with Gila Valley Food Coalition, and what we'll, we'll do is take our tourism dollars and do, it would, it would be like a Stafford Chamber, is what it would look like.
That's what it looks like to me now.
That's what, that's how we are funded now.
Because that's, that's page six, but so far, to get, you're still going to go before these entities to deserve this.
Yes, you're, so, Councilman Lopez, we are, this is a first stop in our, in our campaign for more money.
Really?
And what I, what I've tried to lay out here is that the City of Stafford is more than paid its share. We, you are the primary funders of the chamber, and we're really grateful to be in existence because of the bed tax from the City of Stafford.
I didn't know, we got $20,000 a year plus 50% bed tax. Do we also maintain that building?
We are to maintain the building, so we are working on raising some money for that roof that's leaking.
Okay. Hang on, I got vice mayor first.
You kind of answered, but one thing I was going to ask, how do you plan on seeking these additional funds from the other entities?
Yeah, so, over the past two years, I've been going to town of Thatcher and town of Pima meetings. We recruited Sean Lewis to be on our board of directors to get a really an inside look at what's going on at the chamber, and we've participated in their community events, we've judged their Christmas lighting contest out there. We've really tried to show that we're not just a Stafford Chamber, that we want to be a community-wide chamber, and we've, it's come with a lot of good responses. We need to talk specific numbers with them, we need to have those negotiations, but I think they've seen some of the energy, and I keep talking about energy. When we came into the chamber, I mean, there was dust on stuff. We really had to move it forward about two decades and, and get it online and get it moving, and we're still in that process, but I think they've seen it, and I think people have seen it, and I think they will, I think they'll agree that this is worth, worth moving forward for the whole county, because it's been, it's been lopsided with Stafford paying for it for probably longer than I've been alive.
Thank you. Catherine Steele?
No, I, so if, if they're not on board with this, then what does that do to the funding? You mentioned you might have to let some people go. Does our, does our contribution increase at that point, or will they continue to make the, the amounts that they're making now?
We're in a contract together, the City of Stafford and the chamber, till 2023, so it'll stay the same. And then, depending on what we negotiate, say they say, "Hey, we just want to do the same thing." I think we'll pull the tourism to just City of Stafford. If we're not getting any bed tax from Thatcher or Pima, it wouldn't make sense to have a tourism campaign that was wider. Those, again, that's, I'm hoping that doesn't happen. I'm hoping we have excitement after these meetings and, and it's a community-wide effort, we all walk together. I keep hearing it from both the new mayor, Bryce, and mayor, and mayor and Pima, that we want to do things as a community, we want to do things together, so I really hope so. But yeah, I think the tourism part would definitely be a City of Stafford-focused thing. The events that we have planned in Pima and Thatcher, I just don't think we, we wouldn't do it with how much investment they have. We have, you know, businesses giving more than these entities right now, individual businesses giving more.
Yeah, I have a question real quick. John, maybe you could help on this one too, is the bed tax, what was the sole purpose, and I know it's before your time, but what was the sole purpose of, of the bed tax?
And I know it's before your time, but what was the sole purpose of of the bed tax? Was that not for tourism?
And I think that's why they use that as a funding source because it made the most sense for tourism as a basis.
And and originally, when it when it when the bed tax started, I do believe that the the city gave almost one hundred percent of the funds to the Chamber, and then we we hurdled that in, is that true?
Mayor Counts, I don't know originally, all I know is what was in the contract, and at that point, we were doing twenty thousand upfront and then fifty percent of the remaining bed tax and the building.
I could give a little history on that that I looked up. So about ten years ago, I think it was Ms. Freestone was the executive director of the Chamber, and they were spending like forty thousand dollars a year on Outside Magazine and a few other places that this council back then had a really hard time understanding why what the what where they were getting back for their investment. And so it was a really quick, like, some someone on council found out where the money was being spent, Ms. Freestone was fired, like, within the next week, the Chamber funds, I I don't know what they did with the bed tax then. This most recent contract was after the Chamber Board kind of collapsed, I think it was four years ago now. The Chamber collapsed and Horatio just grabbed a bunch of people, created a board, and cobbled together this agreement just to keep it alive. And so that's the one we're still operating on.
Okay, so the the reason why I was asking is versus what does the city do with the remaining fifty percent sales tax that we or bed tax that we collect? I mean, because the purpose of that was for tourism and to 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 explore tourism, so are you are we just using it to spend or we have money somewhere that we could use for tourism, fifty at the rest of the fifty percent?
Mayor Counts, I believe that those monies just go into the general fund like all other funds, and they're used as part of the budget process. I don't think we ever had an agreement or had anything specifically that requested that we use it for tourism. And again, I think part of that is that, you know, we're putting it into the Chamber, so that's where our tourism dollars go.
Yeah, but at the sum of fifty percent, when my whole purpose, when I understand, when I go and stay in a hotel, the purpose of that is to use for tourism and and that somehow we've gone from what I years and years and years ago, of course, before I was on council, but understanding what the purpose of the bed tax was, was for tourism and was also helped to fund the Chamber. And then I think as council, sometimes I feel gets involved in stuff, we start saying, well, we're spending so much money, and we feel like they're not giving us the bang for the buck, and so we we take the reins and we pull up on the horse and say, hold on a second, so now we're going to only give you X amount of dollars. If the purpose of the bed tax was to influence tourism, then we really need to focus, what's our focus? Is our focus to the Chamber and saying, hey, let's let's turn on to this this bed tax and and release some of the monies to them so they can actually do do a little bit more, then so be it. I mean, it's just those are just some issues that I've always had with the bed tax and where we spent it and what we've done with the remaining fifty percent, because I'd have always liked to have seen tourism being one, and I consider tourism part of wrecks and parks and this and that and the other, because all of that contributes to me. And so just to be thrown in the general fund kind of definitely gets me heartburn. Go ahead.
Well, do you think we could add your topic to the work session and discuss what what? Give them some guidance at that time?
Brad, you're the you're the liaison. I want to hear a little bit from you, do you feel like you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, and and if we if it took a little research to see, like, what I what those numbers even are, because it's twenty thousand upfront and then fifty percent, I'd be interested to know what the
Right, what the numbers.
What the numbers even are. And again, if how that would affect the general budget if we did redirect some of that.
So you think we can put it on the work session coming up to discuss?
We could, we could have it. I I agree that it can be, and that way we can get the numbers and staff can bring us some numbers, but I think, you know, since, how can I say this respectfully, but since a younger generation's picked up the reins at the Graham County Chamber of Commerce, I've seen them hit the ground running. And sometimes it's it's that's the thing is is us us leaders need to kind of get out of the way when we see a horse that's running and let them run, let them take the reins and let them move and and promote business, promote existing businesses, because that's the purpose of this whole thing is to promote the existing businesses, and then to massage the new ones coming in, rein them in and massage them and and as well, but I think that's the whole thing. But I do agree that we need some numbers. Vice Mayor?
You know, I I agree with what's being said, but I think first, I'd like to find out how your new figures, you know,
Work from the others.
Are received from these other, you know, Thatcher and Pima, and then I think it'd be good for us to sit down and talk about them.
And I would just like to add how much I do appreciate the energy that's come with the
Yes, yes.
The new leadership of the council. I don't know how soon it was after you took over Vance that, you know, on a personal note, my son and his crew had a concert out at the Shed in Pima that they were trying to turn into kind of an art venue, music venue. That might have been one of the first few things that you promoted and attended, and it was just really impressive. And there you are out in Pima, right off the bat, giving a lot of good promotion to some kids that were just trying to get something started. So the energy's been amazing since the new leadership's come into come into town.
Mayor has something, go ahead.
Vance, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you put in for the community. You know, you and your staff have really done a lot to the Chamber building, working with nonprofits and other businesses, too, to become aboard with the Chamber, and I think you guys should be really commended for keeping it together and running with it. Just keep it going, okay? Keep it going, that's all I can say.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman?
Yeah, Vance, I you guys, I was here when Ms. Freestone did leave and the changes that went on, we had one director seem like for only two months, but you have brought it to be more visible. There's there's no doubt about that, and I appreciate that. In fact, sometimes I thought you went to Greeley and Cochise a little bit, and I said, wait, wait a minute, what you doing over there and stuff, you know, and I just
They have bed tax over there, too. No, I'm just kidding.
I just thought, you know, and I know and I know you're doing good, and I and I hope that I just I'm just hoping, too, that the Chamber is nonpartisan and doesn't involve itself with politics and stays focused with the business.
We had a few dicey issues at the end of last year. A member that was marijuana-based came in with a ten thousand eight hundred dollar check for a floundering Chamber, and and I know masks can get political, too, so there was it was a one-two punch, and I think I I agree, we we are, we really are here for business, we don't care about what's going on in Washington, what's going on in Phoenix, unless it's helping our businesses.
Right.
And we're going to do as good as we can to be as unbiased as possible.
Thank you.
Councilman Seale?
I just appreciate it, like everyone else, the things you do, Vance. And I'm I'm interested in seeing the numbers, I think, and because right now, we're already funding sixty-four percent or whatever it is. I'd like to see some participation from the other communities as well. And I thought, and John, you'd indicated that it wasn't any really thing specific, but and and I may not be remembering this correctly, but I thought that Horatio, when we reduced that, talked about using that money for community development.
That's what I thought, yes.
And so so in in essence, it would be
Somewhere.
Promoting tourism or some other type of thing or community development at least, but I'm not, do you remember it that way?
I
Yeah. Yeah, I do.
I do. I remember it got held up for a while.
Yeah.
Tell the board and everybody got back, tell you had the structure, and then, but I, too, thought we were going back with it. I thought it was going in some of your economic development.
Yeah, so there should there should be, that's what that's my whole point, there should be fifty percent, the other fifty percent should be held somewhere in the city, not in the general fund, but should have been in in the economic development somewhere. So anyway, that's a good thing for you to look into and get us on a work session.
What would be your bed tax from Pima?
No.
Much, I mean, that's just the reality.
Well, just a couple of points, the the bed tax is a general fund revenue, so that's that's where it is. In terms of identifying programs that, you know, certainly is something that the council could do, I do think there may be some issues with reporting bed tax because by state law, if you have a certain number or fewer of a certain type of entity, then you can't release the bed tax specifically, which is why you don't see it in the general fund numbers because we roll it into other numbers. So the state has a very strict policy in terms of revealing the private sector revenue, and that's one of the ways they do that.
Okay, so so here's one, do you know what the check was that we wrote to to the Chamber for last year? What was the grand total? Because then all we got to do is minus twenty thousand, and we wouldn't know what that half that bed tax was.
That's true.
Right?
It is true.
I mean, I'm not stupid, I can figure that out.
Okay. No, you're totally right.
Okay.
So that's something we want to, are we going to put that on the work session as an?
Yeah, I think I think we have enough council
Okay.
To put that on the work session
Okay.
For the numbers, and I do agree with Vice Mayor that I we would like to have them continue with their promotion and, of course, get to back to Brad so he could get back to us with with your next step or or once you have communicated with Thatcher and with C.B. Fletcher of Pima and and see what they what they have. So then that way there Brad can communicate it with Tammy, and Tammy can send it all to us.
No, sir.
You're good?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, guys, great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Grace.
And lady.
Brings us to item eight, the public hearing. It's a request for the Mayor Council Hold Public Hearing for the proposed rezoning of Graham County Parcel One Zero One dash seventeen dash twelve. Susan, are you on the phone?
I am, Mayor and Council, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, a little bit low, if we could turn it up, I don't know.
Trying to mic her up, just FYI, she's been having trouble hearing, so if we kind of make sure we get into the mic, she's been hearing you and I okay, but I think people are leaning back, so just to help her out a little bit, and I got the mic on her here.
Okay, thanks, Susan, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. So this Planning Community Development Department is in receipt of a rezon application from Robert Hernandez, and that rezon request is for a property located at eight fifteen West Tenth Street. The six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two square foot parcel has the remains of a single-family residence that was destroyed by a fire. The applicant is requesting to rezon the property from R2 multi-family residential to CMH conventional manufactured home. The purpose of the CMH conventional manufactured home district is to provide a district where single-family conventional and manufactured homes may be interspersed. Under the current zoning, the property could be redeveloped with a three-unit triplex apartment. The CMH district requires a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet and a minimum lot width of sixty feet. The six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two square foot property meets the minimum lot size requirements of the CMH district. The property does not meet the minimum lot width of sixty feet for the R2 multiple family residential or the CMH conventional manufactured home district. The property dimension is fifty feet in width by one hundred and thirty-six feet in length, and as part of your package, you have the permitted uses for the CMH district. The ordinance requires a neighborhood meeting that the applicant is required to hold. That neighborhood meeting required notice of all properties within a hundred and fifty feet of the property. That meeting was held on December twenty eighth at six P.M. at the Safford Annex Building. One member of the public attended the meeting and expressed concerns that if a manufactured home is moved onto the property, that it be skirted with a more durable material than aluminum, and asked about whether a ramp would be installed. As part of general, as part of the general plan, all amendments to the zoning ordinance shall be made in accordance with the general plan. Goal number fourteen of the general plan, land use and character element states to support infill, land uses, strategies, and programs that enhance Safford's existing neighborhoods and increase the quality and life of Safford residents. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. All property owners within three hundred feet were notified of that public hearing and also of this public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend City Council approve the rezon request from R2 multi-family residential to CMH conventional manufactured home, and they cited general plan use and character element goal number fourteen, and also noted that there are already manufactured homes in the area. Saff is recommending that the City Council approve the rezoning for the following reasons. One, the rezon request is in conformance with general plan use and character element goal number fourteen, and the rezon is compatible with the adjoining single-family residential property. I do want to note that within the last few days, we did receive a letter from someone who wishes to remain anonymous, and I'm going to read that letter into the record. It says, to whom it may concern, I am writing this on the issue of case Z-eighteen twenty, zoning request from R2 multiple family residential district, the CMH conventional manufactured home district. I recommend that the area on Tenth Street in Safford, Arizona not be rezoned, but that the zone remain R2 multiple family residential. Thank you for your time. And that's and again, that letter, the applicant or the letter writer requested to remain anonymous. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Also, the applicant, Mr. Hernandez, is in the audience and would like to address the City Council.
Hernandez? Mr. Hernandez, would you say state your name, right? You still want all that, Tammy? Okay, state your full name and and your 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 address, which you reside.
Okay, Robert Hernandez, I live at eight fifteen Tenth Street, I'm sorry, that's my mom's address, thirteen ten Trap Road Drive. And Mayor and Vice Mayor, council members, I understand the the that letter that came in and what they may think it may be. Right now, I'm trying to do everything I can to get the the address, eight fifteen Tenth Street cleaned up, so that's why I'm here in front of you all to try to do that. My mom didn't have didn't have insurance, so that was that was a bad thing there. I do know it's a I saw right now, and I do want to get it fixed. I want to either knock down what's left, or if I can't, then I'm going to have to try to work on the four walls that are remaining, but that's going to take a lot of money. My mom's on a fixed budget, I'm trying to help her with what I can. I'm so all I can say is I need your help. I will take pictures of my progress. I'll do what it takes, I'll I'll put it in the paper as far as the pictures that I take showing my progress. I'll do whatever the city expects me to do, I'll stay in the guidelines, I'll do it on a timely matter. And I just hope that you'll you'll consider my wish to get my mom back to her home. I want to, like I said before, I want to get it stuck over, I want to make it look good. I don't I don't expect it to look like what people think it's going to be. But given the chance, I'll I'll prove myself to the neighbors and to you all. And all I can say, just give me a chance.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for, you know, speaking to us. I went by the property and, you know, I took a look, and I hear what you're saying and and reading the minutes of the plans and zoning, there were some concerns they they mentioned, I think one in particular kind of struck me, and I have no problem with your plans. One thing that I, you know, we I guess we really can enforce ourselves is the height of it, you know, having to make it, I I think you said that the shed in the back is higher than what the what the actual home would be?
As far as a manufactured home?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be that is higher. I believe it'll be higher than than the roof.
Yeah, I would think anything that you would do that would complement, you know, that particular street would be necessary, and then that would be good. And then the other thing, too, if the council did approve of it, approve it, I would say get on it as soon as you can because the more time that passes, things just kind of have a habit of not happening. And as you know, we don't have that much control over what you actually do, I think it's more the county, so.
Yes, I understand. Right now, as it sits, I've had to call the police over to make reports. I had a safety net around the around the house. I don't know who took it down, it was torn down, and I put it back up, it was torn down again. There's been trash thrown there inside the the walls and outside the yard there. So that's another thing that I want to be able to get there and start cleaning that up and have more have more time to be there. As far as the roof goes, would it be okay if the if the roof is kind of like within height of the of the shot back there?
I'm just thinking it complements and doesn't detract from the earth.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Mr. Hernandez, I think what Vice Mayor is saying is is instead of it being like way high up on jacks that you you come in and you dig out and you kind of get it down lower than just bringing it straight in and put it on like eight, you know, eighteen, twenty-four inch jacks. You know, Mr. Hernandez, I'll be straight with you, is I'm a I'm I will be voting for this when it comes to a vote, I'm just going to tell you that right now, I'll be voting for it in favor for you, but I do not like the age of the manufactured home that will be brought in. So we're working on that, so you're ahead of the you're ahead of the game right now. And but what's very interesting is the property that's next to you, all of those apartment complexes came in on wheels as well, those are manufactured, and they they were brought in. So I realize that's a commercial part, but those were brought in the exact same way as basically what you're doing, and so I thought that's that's really interesting moving forward. But I do agree with what the Vice Mayor said, if there's a way that you could come in and you could go ahead and and it would also help, you know, the for your for your mother to get in and out a little easier by not having it up so high. But once again, we can't tell you what But once again, we can't tell you what to do. We're just going to approve it or deny it, period, because it's just the first reading. And so ultimately, it's up to you, but, you know, what you do. But things that we would like to see massaged if you can. But ultimately, Mr. Hernandez, it's totally up to you and the county and how it gets set up, okay?
I do have a question. As far as the height, right now it sits two feet off the ground. If I'm able to get that measurement as far as from the ground up to the roof and present that back to you all.
I don't think it goes to us anyway. It'll go to the county. We subcontract with the county on that as far as the setup. So it's basically whatever you and the county decides to do on that. That is perfectly fine for them. But remember, this is just the first reading on it anyway, and we don't vote tonight on this anyway. So ultimately, you're just here to present your case and say, hey, this is what I'm doing. And we're taking you at face value right now.
Yeah, if at all, I'd like to be able to get underneath it if I need to work under it. And that's what I was worried about, making it flat.
Right, I understand.
Hard to get under there.
I understand. Captain Lopez?
Mr. Hernandez, you were asked lots of questions when you were in front of the Planning and Zoning. Some of it was underneath and some the height and the different things. You've talked over some of this with them already. And they asked you quite a few questions, and they came back suggesting to us a unanimous to go forward with it. So as I read it, that's what I'm reading into it too, so far. So it's like the mayor said, this is the first reading, but you seem to have answered all their questions.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Hernandez?
No.
Mr. Hernandez, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And once again, this is a public hearing, so anybody in the audience correct, Tammy correct? Anybody else would like to speak on this or come on up? I don't see everybody jumping at once, so we're going to go ahead and... Susan, do you have anything else for us?
No, just the next agenda item for the first reading.
Okay, so let me go ahead and close out the public hearing and reconvene to our regular meeting. Item ten, which is the ordinance, item ten one, Susan, go ahead.
This is the first reading of ordinance number O two one dash zero zero five, an ordinance of the City of Stafford, Graham County, Arizona, rezoning Graham County Assessor's Parcel, number one oh one dash one seven dash zero one two, located at eight fifteen Tenth Street from R two multiple family residential to C dash M H conventional manufactured home. And Tammy, could you read that into the record?
Ordinance number O two one dash zero zero five, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Stafford, Graham County, Arizona, effectuating a map amendment to the zoning map of the City of Stafford, Graham County Assessor's Parcel, number one oh one dash one seven dash zero one two from R two multiple family residential to C M H conventional manufactured home.
Okay, you have any more discussion on the council? All right, Susan, thank you. I do believe, nope, I think that's it. Susan, do you have anything else for us?
Susan, anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks Susan. Have a good evening. Bring us to item eleven one, resolution R twenty one dash zero zero three. Mr. Henry?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request for the Mayor and City Council to authorize by resolution R twenty one dash zero zero three the Mayor to execute amendment number one to the I G A, or the Intergovernmental Agreement with Arizona Department of Transportation in connection with the construction funding for the Twentieth Avenue Street Improvement Project from Relation Street to Golf Course Road. Staff is recommending authorizing and entering into this agreement with A dot. The proposed improvements include the reconstruction and widening of Twentieth Avenue from Relation Street to Golf Course Road. The design is in the final stages and includes four lanes, four travel lanes, a center turn, left turn lane, storm drain improvements, curb and gutter, and sidewalks on both sides of the street, and a new twelve-inch water line, and pressure-reducing station that will better serve the hospital and surrounding areas. All the necessary rights away and temporary construction easements have been obtained to allow this project to move forward. The design consultant has submitted its final design and construction estimate to A dot and the city for final review. Part of that review is establishing and finalizing the funding to move the project forward to advertise for construction. A dot requires the city's share of this project construction cost prior to bid advertisement. Federal and city funds will be utilized for the construction of this project. Since the I G A was approved on April second of two thousand nineteen, the construction estimate as well as the available funding have increased. The maximum federal funds available is now three million six hundred and fifty-three thousand five eighty-one, and the required city match is two hundred and twenty thousand eight forty-two, which is the five point seven percent, for a total of three million eight hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is how the project is listed in SEAGULS twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five Transportation Improvement Project or TIP report. The latest construction estimate we received, which includes fourteen percent construction engineering and administration costs and a five percent contingency, is four million five hundred and six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. The C E cost will cover the cost for A dot to oversee and administer the construction of the project. The contingency will account for any unforeseen costs that may arise during construction of this project. City is also responsible for the project development, administration, or P D A cost, which is not federally funded, and that amount of twenty thousand dollars has already been paid, invoiced and paid by the city. The city currently has budgeted in the two thousand twenty-one C I P four million seventy-four thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars for the project, which includes the three, three million six hundred and fifty-three thousand five eighty-one of federal grant funds, the two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-two city matching funds, and two hundred thousand for the water main improvements. This leaves a budget deficit of four hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and forty when compared to the estimate. The estimated cost of the water improvements is just over four hundred thousand. Therefore, staff is requesting reallocation of two hundred thousand from the budgeted Carrasco Well Treatment Plant Project that is now going to be funded as part of the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, or WIFIL. The Streets Her Fund currently has a project in the twenty twenty-one C I P for the construction of a cul-de-sac off Tenth Street utilizing the west side of the property purchased for retention basin adjacent to Tenth Avenue. The retention basin will still be constructed with the Tenth Avenue Retention and Road Improvement Project, which is a C I P project. But staff feels the development of the remaining property will be developer-driven and should be postponed until that time arises. Staff is requesting reallocation of the two hundred and fifty thousand to the Twentieth Avenue project as well. And then a budget summary is provided in a budget recap. Just to recap, staff is recommending approving resolution R twenty one zero zero three and the amendment to the I G A with A dot and reallocation of the C I P funds as stated. And I can answer any questions you have.
Are these the emails that are supposed to be receiving?
What's that?
Are these the emails that I was supposed to be receiving?
You got one. By the way, my A dot project manager's name is Michael Anizola, to make things even more confusing.
Why, I was honored to get one, okay, anyways.
Now, and I had to get clarification from you today. One of the projects you want to put on hold somewhat is the, some of the property we bought on Tenth Avenue near the distributing...
It's on Tenth Avenue and Tenth Street, that corner.
Tri-County.
Just across, just south of Tri-County.
And so, yeah, there's not a whole lot going on there at this time. And so I can see why you want to pick that pocket. And that sounds good by me because we're not going forward on anything yet. I'm a little hesitant with the Carrasco Well, but you say we're getting WIFIL funds now to back that up.
That project has been approved by the WIFIL Board to be part of that WIFIL loan. And so that funding is available in our C I P.
Because water is pretty darn important to us and that going on there. And I did ask you too, because the Twentieth Avenue with changes in the engineering, when Mr. Petty left and stuff, things got changed and everything. But I know you've talked to the other staff, the other supervisors from the other departments that get to see the plans, get to inject their ideas about what else might be coming up there, like if we go through with El Paso Boulevard or Twentieth Street and whatnot. Because it never fails, as soon as we build something nice and pretty, we dig it up. And so hopefully, they got extra conduit in there for the future, and they're thinking ahead.
We're trying to think of it all.
I know you are, I mean, but I always got to butt in somewhere, somewhere, because conduit is the cheapest thing we got.
Yep.
We get it put in there right, because that, you know, it needs to be lit up good, the street's good. Because we have elderly going on, walking around down there, and we just lost one. And we want it lit up and marked good and all that kind of stuff. I'm just saying this for the record. I gave you all that today, so.
Appreciate it.
I'll move, we approve resolution number R two one dash zero zero three.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. I have one more little item I would like to find out. Is I realize this is just, this is getting ready to go out to bid, correct?
It's getting ready to go out to advertise.
And have you thought of any retainer on your contracts? At least a five percent or a ten percent, so we don't get stuck with an eighth-street project again.
This will be all A dot administered, it'll be all A dot.
They're the ones who's going to preview all of the contracts and...
And the way A dot handles theirs is each pay request has to have a statement saying that they paid their subs as they go along. And there is, I think there is a retainage there. Paul David can maybe speak to that. But they have a good way of handling their pay requests and making sure subs are paid as the project goes on.
And so anything that we do in-house, though, are you promoting a retainer as well?
The stuff we do in-house, we'll do at our cost.
No, I'm talking about any contracts from here on out.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, yes, like we've talked before, yes.
We're going to be doing...
Legally, we can't hold that retainage, but we...
You can't for like thirty or sixty days, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, but we can't hold it for the year.
Right.
We do have a year for them to come back and make changes.
Right.
But we can't hold that retainage, unless they have it fixed something, which we're still going on right now.
Okay, perfect. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor and a second by Councilman Anizola. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Lance. Bring this item twelve, new and old business. You approved the January twenty-fifth City Council minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at them?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcement of current events.
I don't know about current events. Is this where we kind of... I'm still not used to how we get to address things on here.
Well, I think that's kind of probably where it goes. What do you want to address?
Well, I'd like to thank our own fire department for... I got to go to a ceremony Saturday, and a longtime friend of mine, Mr. Morris, who passed away and was a fireman for many, many years. And they had his ceremony, and I was thankful to our fire department for being there, setting up the ladder truck and having that enormous flag up for him because he rightly deserved that. And I often forget our firefighters putting their lives on the line. He did a lot for Pima, and I was just thankful for us participating in that. And if the chief was here, I would tell him thank you, certainly. And we did talk about the bid tax maybe going to our work session. I'd like to talk to staff about, Jay was in here so he could hear it, but I guess he's not. Some, the painting at the golf course and the handicap parking is deteriorated. And the handicap people aren't allowed to, aren't being able to get in there. The signage needs to be updated and marked and taken care of there.
So you want to see that on a session or you just want to point that out to staff?
I just tried to mention that the staff, that they'd pick up on it. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank staff for the steps.
Is that awesome?
That is real nice for us old guys walking up. We don't have to climb the ramp. We can step up now, real...
Don't fall forward.
We don't fall, yeah, forward. Thank you.
That's good. Good job on that. And as Councilman Lopez said, that was my uncle who had passed away. And kudos to the Stafford Fire Department for the display of colors and the display of camaraderie and how, that's how the community's supposed to work. We're supposed to be there for each other, and I do want to appreciate, I do acknowledge that as well.
He was a good baker too, wasn't he?
He was, the sugar shack. Yep, you know, and as we're getting into our budget writing for staff, and of course, this is something that they, I'm just going to throw this out there, and the council's probably going to, uh! But, you know, one thing I would like to see us be in the process of discussing in the budget is what could we, as the city, fund the insurance for the volunteer fire department? If they choose to go, like if they get family insurance, could we subsidize that for the volunteer fire department? Because I don't know what they get paid now. I don't know. It used to be like ten bucks, then it's gone up to fifteen. I don't know if it's eighteen or what it is. But I think for recruitment as well, maybe it's something that could be offered to them that we fund their insurance.
Mayor, Council, are you saying in total?
Yes. So I don't know, what is the family insurance now? Eight hundred bucks a month?
That I don't know.
That is about eight hundred?
For the Heidi Vexwell Health Care, the family premium on the employee currently is about four hundred and twenty dollars.
And that's if the employee gets on the family? So it'd be basically about, let's just say roughly, four hundred bucks a person? I don't know, it's just something to kick around, and I would like to discuss it. I don't know if that needs to be on a work session during our budget. You can come back with numbers and say, it's this much money, and, you know, we choose not to go that direction or what. But I think they do a tremendous job. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
And something else we can put on the work session, a discussion about our bike pass in town. We have signs. I think it's something we have to take a look at.
The bike routes?
The bike, yeah, bike routes, the bike pass, whatever. I think it's pretty important because I think we're in trouble if there's an accident.
I'm just, and this will all come out. I don't know what I'm talking about really. But I think if we start picking and choosing different departments to cover all the insurance, I think that might be an issue. Is that right, John? Do we have to treat everyone the same?
I believe we do, yes.
Not saying they're not something we can do, but it may not be, you know, changing their insurance, so.
Something you can look into?
Mayor, Mayor Council, the Vice Mayor, Ortega, on the bike paths, are you talking about signage?
Okay, there's some signs there that you can read. There's some you can't read. There used to be the white lines, you know, designating where the path is.
Did we enter a work session?
Yeah, we're in our work session.
Got it.
Yeah, good to go. Okay, so this evening I wanted to give you an update of where we were at with the Employee Benefits Project. First, I would like... were at with the employee benefits project. First, I would like to recap the process and timeline with what we've done and where we are at today. So just quickly, in, in October, we, the benefits committee did hire and interview benefits broker, Oscar Diaz, with C-Bes is who was selected, and he did market pricing for us through November and December, and reviewed those findings with council on January twentieth, and was able to get the ragged renewals in early, and we gave that comparison to during those meetings. Today, we are ready to give a recommendation to City Council on whether we should stay or leave Raggett, and depending on that decision is, will determine if we enter into stage two of the process. So I briefly covered previously the direction of the employee benefit survey that we did covering health insurance premiums, vision, claims administration, wellness, and short-term disability, but I wanted to go into a little bit more detail of what those results were with the responses from staff. So seventy-two percent of staff stated that they were satisfied with their health coverage, and eighty-five percent stated that they would not waive their health coverage if they were offered a monthly premium or credit on their paycheck. So that tells us that they value that benefit offering that we give them. However, sixty-two percent of staff stated that they felt their insurance premium contributions were too high. Those that responded and that were asked what they thought the employer should pay, over half of those respondents stated seventy-five percent of the employer should pay of the contributions, and the next largest group of employees stated that the employer should pay eighty percent. They were also asked about their satisfaction with vision, and sixty-four percent stated that they were unsatisfied with the vision plan. That's could be because in the beginning, we were having a lot of issues with claims administration through Maritain. We have resolved all of those issues with them, but sometimes a bad experience could be really difficult to recover from. But that could lead us into why the next graph states that only a third of our employees were satisfied with the claims administration. Seventy-seven percent of employees stated that they would participate in more wellness if offered, and when asked what new benefit they would like to see added to their benefits package, we had a request for a short-term disability insurance. After those survey results, Oscar Diaz assisted the City of Safford with the RFP process to price match our current benefits and a benefit design from that employee survey. Oscar presented those findings to council on January twentieth with a comparison to the Raggett renewals. We are expecting an eight percent, an estimated eight percent or a hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollar increase that would take us to two million, fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars for our medical under Raggett. There will not be any increase to our dental, vision, and life insurance under Raggett, and you may notice that there are no amounts under the EAP, the FSA Administration, COBRA Administration, and the ECA Administration fees. That is because they are all rolled up in that medical cost, so we are paying for it, you just don't see the breakout of that. Now, the RFPs came in at two million, thirteen thousand, fifty-two dollars for the health, and an overall eight thousand, seventy-seven dollar change from the Raggett renewals. Did not include the numbers on the short-term disability insurance that Oscar priced for us, because I'm currently getting that priced out through ECA, so I don't have that comparison yet, but I'll share that with you whenever I get that information. Through this whole process, council had a few questions, and I wanted to make sure that I responded and answered your questions. One of those questions is why we didn't consider some of the late bids that came in, and yes, we did receive two late bids for our dental insurance, and that, that bid closed on December tenth at ten a.m., and United Concordia and Emeritus was received later that day, so we did not consider them. The reason why is we have our own purchasing policy that was adopted in two thousand and eighteen by resolution R eighteen dash zero two six, and we also follow the Arizona procurement code that references late offers, modifications, and withdrawals. So that's why we don't consider late offers. There was also some questions on the city reserves. One of the questions was, are our reserves vested? And yes, they are vested in the local government investing pool. And another question on our reserves amount, and as of January thirtieth, our cash position was about one point seven million, and our incurred but not reported, I think in your packet might have a P there, it's supposed to be an R, was just shy of three hundred thousand dollars, that gave us a surplus position of about one point four million. So whenever I was asking Aaron with ECA all these questions about our reserves, he said that he was more than happy to answer any questions that we have on Raggett, how Raggett works, our reserves, and how those are held, and offered to come meet the City Council and have a work session with all of you to give you some education on how Raggett works and answer any questions that you may have. If that's something you're interested in, just let me know, and I'll help coordinate that work session for you. So that brings us to what our recommendation is, and staff would like to recommend that the City of Safford renew the contract with Raggett. Two main reasons for that is, is we wouldn't necessarily be saving money if we left, and we do have protection by being in a shared risk pool. But we also want to respond to what staff's requests were through the employee benefit survey, and would like to recommend that we change our shared premium contribution. If we went to the eighty-twenty, it would increase our cost of a hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. If you add that on top of the hundred and fifteen thousand with the eight percent renewal, we're looking at a total increase of three hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. If we went more to a seventy-five twenty-five split, we're looking at about ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy, with a total increase of two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. We'll also always continue to educate our staff to utilize the HR department anytime they're having any problems with their insurance or claims administration, that we will get involved and help resolve those problems with Maritain or any insurance company that we're ever with. And we would also like to request through our budget process some money to set aside for wellness activities for staff, to, you know, wellness and, and a healthier lifestyle can help reduce those claims. And then also add a new benefit of short-term disability insurance that is currently being priced by ECA, and I think it was just a little over seventeen thousand dollars is what Oscar came back with in the, in the bidding, but that did not include our fire, and I've asked ECA to include our fire personnel or volunteers with that. So that's all I have, and would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
How many employees, and you may not know this off the top of your head, how many employees have single coverage and not family coverage?
I actually, I actually have that in my pocket.
And that, it's not really a, a problem. The reason I'm asking that is if we, if we change the family coverage, we do nothing for the employees that don't have family coverage. I'd be more in favor if we do anything, maybe paying a hundred percent of the employee's coverage, and then, because that benefits every employee. If we, if we just change the percentage on the family coverage, that doesn't necessarily do anything for those who have individual coverage. Is that right, or am I looking at it wrong?
I, I believe we could, I want, I would want to double check, but I believe we could do more for the employee. I know that we're required through Raggett, through that trust, that we do at least a ninety, I think it's at least a ninety-ten, so we might be able to do more, I just know that we can't do less, and that's probably why you see there's a, a separation there.
Right, and so what I was saying, if we do anything, I'd be more in favor of doing a hundred percent of the employee coverage, and then doing something less of the family coverage. The, the issue we run into is that premiums are gonna go up every year. So if a premium goes up right now, we've still covered ninety percent of that increase on the individual, and we've covered seventy percent of the increase on the family coverage. So we're taking a hit as well as the employees, and then, then that was part of the reasoning behind trying to give them a raise, was to make up that, a little bit of that, that difference in the increase. And so I think we need to get to a position where this is what we do, recognizing that things may change, but not be expected to not only absorb the ninety percent of the increase, or seventy percent of the increase, but absorb all of that, plus add some more so that employees are paying less. But, but I guess my point is, I would be more in favor of doing something that would, would benefit everyone, which might be paying a hundred percent of their individual coverage. I know that doesn't save people a whole lot of money. What does that cost for, for individual? Thirty or forty dollars a month, or fifty?
So our, our current monthly premiums for the high deductible health plan for employee only is fifty dollars and ten cents, where family coverage is four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. And on the EPO plan, employee only is sixty-three dollars and fifty-five cents, and family is five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-nine cents.
And that's just something to think about.
Go ahead, Brett.
Does that make it, so that if we went up ten percent on the, on the family, that would seem to be fairly equal to going up to a hundred percent on the individual?
I would just have to...
Close.
I, I wouldn't know without reading the numbers, but I could definitely put that together and, and get that back to you on what that increased amount would be if we did a hundred percent for employee only and remained with a seventy-thirty tier for all other tiers.
I have to kind of agree with Councilman Seale, the whole purpose is we're covering our employees, we're not covering their family. And so if there is to be, and, and because as what he is saying, every year, you're going to see an increase in insurance premiums. And so we're gonna keep tacking on forever the employee's family, but we're benefiting the employee, and they're, and we're getting from them as well, they're working for us. And so I think, hey, in a great world, I think you should cover my insurance, the whole family, but the facts is, I'm the employee, not my wife and not my kids, and so therefore, the city should be really focusing on the employee and not the family, and...
And I, I'm not suggesting so much that we not focus on the family. What I'm saying is that those who have individual coverage get no additional benefit if we increase our participation in the family coverage. But if we did a hundred percent of the employee's coverage, then everyone who works for the city would get a benefit.
So if I think I understand, stand what you're saying, is we would separate out what the employee costs for all the other three tiers, and we would cover the employee, no matter what tier they're on, at a hundred percent, and then we would stay with the remaining costs, and we would keep a seventy-thirty split for all their, for the dependent tiers.
Okay, that's similar to what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not saying anything about the seventy-thirty, I'm just saying that if that's what we do, the seventy-thirty, how does the person who has individual coverage get any benefit from that?
So if I could jump in, so basically what I think I'm hearing is a couple of things. One is, based on the scenario you're laying out, that you would want to cover individuals at a hundred percent, right? Single.
Right, right.
But, and then family would be subject to the change in the percentage breakout that's being recommended?
Well, there would, either we would leave it the same, or we would increase it, but I'm just concerned that if we just increase the family coverage, if we do, you have individual coverage, probably, is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
You would receive no benefit. Is that correct?
Well, I would if, if the, if the breakouts changed, right?
The recommendation is that we keep the employee only at the ninety-ten, it was the dependent tier that...
Then you're right, I would receive no benefit.
And I'm not worried about you, but what I'm saying is...
Sure, you should be worried about it, somebody has to.
But I, I'm concerned that everyone, if there's a benefit, that everyone gets some benefit, whereas if they just have individual coverage, they get no benefit if we make a change in the, in the family coverage.
So the hundred percent you're referring to is the increase, then?
We would, for the employee, we would, and I haven't really, this is something that we need to discuss, I'm just saying that I want, I would like to do something so that everyone, if we're doing anything, everyone gets the benefit. So if we paid a hundred percent of the employee's coverage, which you're saying is maybe sixty-five dollars a month?
Between fifty and, and six, and this is without, this is our current premiums? This is not with a eight percent?
Well, but, but the other will be, and so if we have, how many employees?
We have around a hundred and forty-five on staff.
Okay, so if we're paying sixty dollars a month, we'll just say, on average, for that many employees, that would be about eight or nine thousand a month, a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year, which would be about half of what we're looking at, or a third of it.
And I'm sorry, that one forty-five doesn't include our, our fire department, so add another thirty on there, but usually about fifty percent of them enroll for the health coverage.
Right, okay. No, and I'm, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just, that's something that I thought about as we were talking about this, that if we're gonna do something, we need to make it a benefit to everyone, not just those with the family.
Yeah, we could...
So, so you're, so kind of you're suggesting too, in the sense, without suggesting it, is covering a hundred percent of the employee and then leaving the seventy-thirty, or leaving the seventy, was it seventy-thirty on the, on the family? No, it's not see that eighty, eighty-twenty, because I'd be more in favor of, of what your recommendations would be, and I'm, I'm not saying that's your recommendations, but paying one hundred percent of the employee and then leaving the other where it is right now, current, period.
But if you could come back with the numbers for us, then we can, we can kind of have an intelligent conversation.
Right.
Yeah, I could definitely put some of those numbers together in different scenarios and, and how that would affect our increase. I guess the main thing that I was looking for tonight is direction on what you would like to see with what we do moving forward, if you would like to see us renew our contract with Raggett, or if we would be entering into stage two of the timeline and process, which would be, I'd be letting Raggett know that as of April first, we would not be renewing our contract with them, and they can work on their renewals without the City of Safford included, and then I would start the implementation right away with Oscar and the other insurance companies.
Lydia, I don't think anybody wants to die on that sword tonight, and I don't, so I think we want to stay with Raggett. But the, but I do have some questions that I would like to see about you getting answered. I didn't really get answered in that interview, or whatever, whatever we called that. It was recommended in our meeting that we should only have about a six month in our reserve, and currently, we have one point seven, if I heard you correct tonight, in our reserve with Raggett, correct?
That was as of the June thirtieth.
And so we have one point seven million, and they're investing it, and they get the return on the investment, not us, correct?
And those details, I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't know, and that's why I would recommend that work session, because they should know.
Okay, so, so in other words, what I'm saying is, at one point seven million, we don't need to have one point seven million sitting. Are we the biggest player in Raggett right now?
We are the biggest entity out of, out of the seventeen that is a part of Raggett.
So we should have a little bit of say. In other words, you should go in there loud and in charge, seems to me. And having one point seven million in the reserve, I don't think there's anybody close to that that's in the pool with us, right?
I'm sorry, I don't know what everybody else's funds are.
From one, from what I heard, I gathered that we, that there wasn't really anybody close to one point seven.
Yeah, there, there are some people that are not, that, you know, we carry them.
So if it was recommended to us, that if we went out on our own, we only have about a six-month reserve, we need to get our money back.
And there...
And maintain a, a, a nice cushion in reserve, but not no one point seven, so that unless you're getting that return in investment, which they get to, with, with what they're investing, if we get that return on investment and it comes back to us, then that's our money. But if they're getting it, if Raggett's getting it, we should be, we should be, especially us being the biggest guy in the, in the wheel captain's seat, we should be getting some of our monies back and not be keeping one point seven million in there, just my two cents.
And the only thing that I'm aware of, of whenever we do get any money back, is And the only thing that I'm aware of, of whenever we do get any money back is through our premium holiday, where we don't actually receive money back. It's just that we don't pay our premium for that month because our reserves are good. As far as what that number should be or what we have, I think that number changes constantly. But to understand how all of that works, I think it would be beneficial for all of us to have them come and really educate us on it and answer the questions that you've got.
I don't know that having them come and educate us by them saying that they need the 1.7. I think we just spent, how much did we spend with, with this Garcia guys? $20,000?
No, so just through the stage one, it was $2,500 a month. He has not invoiced me for February. However, he's available for anything. If we move forward, then I would be invoiced for that. It's moving forward after stage two, if we sign on with them, it would be $24,000 a year.
Okay, so, but we've given him what, around $10,000 for, for the paperwork that he's done?
Yes.
And he's come back and he's told us that there's no need to have more than six months. In fact, I even think that we've even heard that from staff as well. So, I really think that we should get together and say, hey, you don't need 1.7 million in there. Really, truly, you're covering the other eight players that are involved with us with our, with our money. They're playing with our money and they shouldn't be playing with our money. It's the city of Safford's money. It's the residents' money. And I would really be curious to know why we don't know that investment, if that money is truly coming back to the city of Safford or if that goes to RAGIT. But that's something that we should really find out about.
Okay.
I don't know that we need to meet with them. I think you're asking them the questions.
Right.
Yep.
I don't, we don't need them here.
I think you already know what, what needs to be asked, where we're going. I, I'm not quite sure what that million whatever benefits us, but I guess we'll find out.
It's, it's the reserve. It's like, it's the reserve. And, and, and when I was in the meeting, they said of six, they said six months is more than enough. Did they say that to you guys as well?
Yeah, for the most part.
Go ahead, Jean.
But he was, he was talking about something different. He was talking about if we went...
If we went somewhere else.
...on self-funded plans somewhere else. And so, I, what I'm not sure of and Lydia can find out is that if we can get that money now unless we, unless we leave. But I think those are all things that she should be able to find out for us.
Yes, depending on what you have in that reserve. And ironically, I had started a conversation tonight with Alma to kind of look into this very issue because I think there's a formula they use to generate that number. But we're at 1.4 right now because I think there's costs in the pipeline. Again, I think that's part of the presentation. But yeah, the, the number is high, but I think we'd have to look into see how they calculate it. And then it would be a discussion to see if we can make any changes within it, which again, you don't know if that would impact the premiums and so on. So, you know, I think it is something we need to look.
Right. And I really would like for us to be, for us to have an answer of the investment that we're, that this company is investing. Where does that money go? Does it go back to that investment or does it go to those investors to pay off the new person who just bought the place?
Right. We'll, we'll look into it.
Okay.
I still have one more.
Go ahead.
The, the short-term disability insurance. Now, we, you brought that up because you wanted, you wanted that to happen sooner. The employees wanted to have that, that benefit kick in sooner. Could you tell me more about that again?
So, we currently don't have, staff doesn't have a short-term disability insurance. What they have is their accrued sick leave and vacation leave, that if something happened to themselves, it would be an employee benefit, not a dependent. But if they had a, a medical situation and they had to be out on an extended leave, that after a 30-day waiting period, they would, their short-term disability insurance would kick in. So, the first 30 days, they would use any accrued sick or vacation leave. And then the short-term disability insurance would pay 66.23% of their wages. And whenever they're able to return back to work, they return back to work. Most case scenarios is their FMLA leave of 12 weeks that they would be off of work. However, there are some circumstances where employees are off of work longer and they go into their long-term disability through ASRS or through PSPRS. And what this insurance would do is cover after 30 days, all the way into their long-term disability to where they're having some wage replacement for whenever they're off of work. Otherwise, they're without pay. The majority of them can't afford their insurance premiums. They still have to maintain those. It's whenever they probably need it the most because they've got a medical situation that they need paid for through their health insurance. It's common benefit that is in public sector employers. And it's something that we currently don't have. It would replace our vacation donation policy, where the only way that we can help each other is to donate our vacation leave. And employees need that for their own rest and relaxation and time away from work. So, everybody would be able to use their own benefit for themselves.
But it has worked fairly well up till now, then donating time.
I have had, since I've been here, a serious health condition where employees have gone without pay and patisserie and Cobra and, you know, they've, they've gotten into their long-term disability, but there was times that they struggled to even get a donation for their health insurance premiums.
You said that was 12, that benefit would cost 12 something, was that?
So, what was priced with Oscar, what he was able to get, that estimate was about $17,000, a little over $17,000. ECA is pricing that for us currently. Yeah, and so, they are pricing that for us. I don't have those numbers yet. The thing with C-Bids, Oscar was not able, or he did not, I don't know if he wasn't able to, but it did not include our fire department. ECA asked me if, it was a group that I wanted included for the insurance and I told them yes. It might pay a little bit differently because it's usually based on your income. Everybody's income is different. Firefighters are paid off of a $15 stipend for calls and trainings and such. So, it might look more like an average, but it would at least give them some type of income replacement if they were off on a short-term disability.
Lydia?
Yes.
On the donation program, is there, do you have to be above a certain, a certain amount of leave, accrued leave time or vacation time in order to donate?
I would have to, I don't recall off the top of my head on the policy. I'd have to pull that up to answer that question.
I've been involved with others where you couldn't donate, for example, unless you had over a certain amount of days accrued.
Right, and that usually falls in a PTO program because your paid time off includes your holiday, your sick, your vacation, and they want you to have covered at least that first week if something was to happen. So, they'll, they'll have a minimum, you have to have a minimum balance in there to be able to donate.
Right.
That usually, that I, that was in, whenever I was in the private sector, that was their policy.
Okay, thank you.
If, if, if we were, were to pay the 100% on just employees, does that jeopardize any of their HSA?
So, the HSA is something completely different. They, you have to be in a high deductible health plan to have an HSA. So, currently for employee only, the city will match up to $116.67 a month. So, they have to contribute for them to get the money from the city. And that increases to $233.33 if you have another tier. Before our insurance premiums increased last year, that covered the amount that the city contributed, paid for half of the deductible. That, we didn't increase the HSA when the premiums increased, so it's just a little shy of the deductible now. But it doesn't, it wouldn't jeopardize it.
It won't jeopardize as long as they're in high deductible.
Yeah, they have to have a high deductible health plan to have an HSA.
Lydia, have you checked with other companies around Graham County, what they offer? Do they offer an 80/20? If so, could you give us that tonight?
I could pull it, probably pull it up. I did contact all of our local like entities.
Schools, anything that's comparable to about 145 employees?
Town of Thatcher, Graham County, Eastern Arizona College. I did con...
Safford schools?
The, the, like the Safford High School and the public schools. No, I did not contact them, but I can.
But, but what are, what are they offering for their employees? Is it 80/20? Is it 70/30?
So, I think it was Thatcher that paid for all of it and they really didn't experience any out-of-pocket expenses. EAC gave like a monthly credit that paid for a lot of your premium. I want to say, I'm sorry, it's been months since I, I did this, but I want to say it was up to 900 for the family coverage that they gave back to the employees. So, theirs seemed really, really rich. Those were the two most rich plans that I came across. But as far as whether it was like an 80/20, a lot of them were flat dollar amounts instead of like a percentage. I think I had contacted Wilcox and I think theirs was a flat dollar amount.
Freeport-McMoRan?
Uh, no. Well, you know what? Yes, I always have their stuff. But there's, I don't remember what their numbers were, but I do have their benefits package. I just tried to stay with like entities as far as, to compare us more with. It's a little bit more difficult to compete with Freeport. But as far as benefits, I recall Thatcher was the, it was, it had been beat Freeport's as far as the amount that they pay for staff.
Okay, and Graham County?
I don't recall. It didn't seem nearly as, as rich as the EAC and Thatcher.
So, as we, as we, as we grow on to this, we already, so tonight you kind of understand we're not leaving RAGIT. So, that, that gives you that direction. But we want to see some numbers. We want to see some, some more work done by HR to come back to us on this. I'd like to see the numbers from other entities. I would like to see Freeports in there. I would like to see counties, Thatchers, the college as well as the Safford schools.
Graham County Utilities.
Graham County Utilities has quite a few, yeah. So, let's see what, see what those are bringing us because those are your competition. Those are who you would, that would lead the city and go to work for them. So, we need to have those kind of numbers and, and if you can get us in the percentage where they're at and go from there and let's just, that way we have them all.
Okay, I could do that.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for HR? Did that help you?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Yes, I do.
That's adjourned.
All in favor?